Uh this year, I know it's gonna take some effort to find families that are eligible. But I know they're out there.
Just to clarify, I think it's almost harder to find places for families to take their kids daycare.
Yeah.
Not so difficult to find the families that are eligible.
So if we successfully build like a seventy unit childcare facility, we'll see that. We'll we'll see our ability to draw state dollars into Clear Creek go up.
That's fair.
Can you explain, the next one is the CMP family service program? I know a big change there, uh, we spent six hundred and fifty this year, we're projecting spending thirty four thousand.
That's our cloud management program, so we get incentive funding of. Any, so last year, we received funding, it was thirty something thousand. We dedicated part of that to the coordinator position and um only used about six hundred and fifty for families, for services for families, mainly because we weren't very successful in getting families to participate in CMP. This year already though, so far, we've seen a lot more engagement and spent more money on services for families.
Yeah, so that that program both funds the coordination, right, CMP programs bring various service providers around the table to try to figure out how to deal with families with complex needs, that's how I understand it, and so it's both paying for that coordination and direct service delivery.
Correct, and we have an oversight group that approves that budget, so that's not set by the department, we request um part of that funding to go to pay for the coordinator, which is actually also our EPS worker.
Okay. That is, those are all of the questions that I had. Um Mitch, Randy.
You cut the two I had.
Childcare.
George, did you get your question answered about the Title IV mental health and the Title IV substance abuse expense?
Oh, I didn't, uh, Tracy, are you, thank you. Tracy, are you still here? I I see Title IV expenditures. I don't see Title IV revenues, I'm guessing that's because they're just labeled differently.
So that is all part of the core reimbursement, the core program reimbursement.
Okay. That core services program, we apply to the state, but it comes from the feds.
Right.
To the state. Okay, I don't have any other questions, thank you. Randy?
Yes.
Information technology. I think I'm gonna put you on the spot here.
Good.
Um, just, just so that the public can follow the narrative, twenty twenty-two, seven hundred thousand dollars, twenty twenty-three, one point six. That was the board directing staff to take all of the IT expenses that had been sort of in various departments' budgets and consolidate them so that we have a sense of what we're spending on IT. Uh, we discovered at that time that we were spending a lot more on IT than other counties through that effort. And you can see here that we're making progress, we went from one point six million dollars spent on IT to this year one point zero eight million dollars spent on IT.
For twenty twenty-five.
For proposed for twenty twenty-five.
What um, the first question I have about that is, what other costs are still logged in here? Cause you, you know, we've put a lot of things together, the sheriff's department in with us. And so that one point six, trying to recall, did one point six include the sheriff's office having been transferred into house from twenty twenty-three? And in which case, how, during that same year, twenty twenty-three, how many other expenditures still existed out in the sheriff's office budget? And in this proposed budget going forward, or in twenty twenty-four, how many, how many IT expenses still exist in the sheriff's office?
Well, I wish they were here to help us answer that question, I don't think a lot at this point, we moved the lion's share of the IT expense that was in that budget, and we've been trying to pare back into one system, right, which is, which was caused some of the problems that we had earlier this year.
And I know that our, our contracting and stuff is still somewhat separate terms of operations.
We still have a contract with Axiom, that's in this IT budget, not in the sheriff's office budget.
Okay, so, so, so to your knowledge, IT expenses in the sheriff's office are actually logged into this budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I will tell you.
These are real savings then.
They are, but I will tell you that I think maybe that one million number in twenty-five is too low, and I need to look at that before we ultimately bring you the final budget.
But I'm wondering, based on the fact that Axiom's been continuing to be beneficial to the sheriff's offices, I understand it, at least.
Correct.
And we've still got some stuff to clean up.
Yeah, we're gonna blow through some of these numbers in, in the IT budget this year, because of that, because Axiom is still on in the, in the sheriff's office, and they need to be now. I've met with Axiom a couple times now to, to, to bring them on, um, given.
Into this other side.
Given our IT director has left, um. I just got a, a, an updated quote, which I've, quite frankly, I've done at a time to, to take a look at, it's much lesser than our first quote we received. I think for the most part, we can probably cover that through the salary of the existing IT director that's not hired right now, but I would not want to remove that FTE at this point until we make a decision on long-term, what, what meets the needs of the county the best. Um, I, I, I still, I still contend not having having an outside entity to our IT is, is not having someone who's really got our best interest at heart when their, when their motivation is profit. Um, so that's what we're gonna analyze, we're bringing them on for, uh, to, we're bringing them on now to assist us, given we're, we're down staff. Um, but that's something we're gonna be evaluating.
So, so I guess my question then is, you said you think this number is low, I would rather go in. Personally, I'd rather see us go in with a number that's realistic.
Agreed.
And so whatever that one thousand eighty-one would increase by in order to do that, would probably be reflected in the two line items, outside service uh, and maintenance contract.
There may be, we may need to add some capital numbers here, uh, with respect to some purposes we need to manage.
Some consulting and some, and some upgrades.
Um. I, I know the narrative that we had a couple years ago was that our IT system was expensive because we were running dispatch in-house and we were running four servers for an organization that has two hundred and fifty employees. When uh, the assertion was made by Sean Wood that one server might be able to handle all of that work. Maybe we actually need two, how, can you tell me about pros, progress on sort of reevaluating our IT architecture?
That's part of what I'm doing now by bringing Axiom on, but.
Okay.
I don't know how, I don't. Unless one has a I, IT background, how do they know that we don't need four servers versus one? I mean, how do they, where's that coming from? And it, it has to be based in in the, in the science of IT and, and the needs of the organization, right? And uh, cause Axiom would be, if Axiom were sitting here right now, they would tell us we need four servers. They would most definitely tell us we need four servers, but how do I, how do I trust that when their bottom line goal is, is, is again, is profit, because in their, from, from their perspective, they have all brand new equipment that's all under warranty? That's pure profit to them, because they don't have a lot of work to do, because someone else is doing the work, right? So that's the challenge of IT in general, that we're trying to get our arms around. So I, you know, it's, I mean, it's easy for us to sit in here with our IT, a complete IT background and say, you know, we don't, we don't need that many servers, but I I can't tell you if that's the case or not, honestly.
Yeah, I, I'm not confident enough in that, that I'm gonna like slash this number.
Right.
Um, I, I know that the research that Sean did involved calling other counties and saying how many servers finding that other counties were figuring it out with fewer servers. That seems like a compelling piece of evidence.
Well, until you, until you. That's, you're, and how do we know we're assessing apples to apples? By just looking at a, a number in the, in a budget.
Having kitchens doesn't tell you how many people you can fit on.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Um.
Yeah, I agree. It's, the, the research is anecdotal.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm, I've. I'm not asking for a change in these.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
I do think that moving forward is supposed to be an area that we need to focus on and, and explore. I don't know that we'll be able to land that plane for this year's budget.
Yeah, let me, and I, I can have some further conversation with staff. So. Our existing staff that, to get their perspective also, I just haven't had the chance to do that.
Corraling the conversation onto the budget side, onto its budget side. One thousand eighty-one, four sixty-five. Let's go back to the fact you said that number feels low. The thing to come back with and go do the research on is what should that number be that does give you comfort, based on some conversation you have with them.
Actually, yeah. I mean, right now, we're operating with servers that Axiom installed, that are their servers that we didn't pay for. Right? And they're like, we need our servers back, well, can't blame you for that. Part of some of the fixes that occurred when we had some of the problems.
The services that they're referring to as paperweights, they want them back?
Well, the ones that we're using right now are not paperweights, they're servers, I just.
I, I remember them referring to their value as that of a paperweight. So, anyway. I I, I agree with Randy. If, uh, if this number needs to be higher, this number needs to be higher and additional work can, you know, be pursued, I, I'd love to see outside of the budget process, you know, this continue to be brought to the board to evaluate options around contracting or hiring, rehiring.
That's exactly, that's exactly our intent, so.
Internal services, or, and well, you both have given me body language that says you wanna move on, but yeah, internal services.
Therefore, which finger you use?
I just noticed that.
Supposed to speak up, remember?
Oh, that was not a public comment.
The microphone's right in front of you.
Matt Taylor, thank you, uh, before we pepper you with questions, what do we need to know about changes to your budget?
Sure, just like, uh, all the other departments and divisions that have gone before me, um, our salaries include the three percent COLA as well as the uh, hundred percent comp plan analysis, so that's a significant portion of our uh, budgets and, and the increase. Um, some of the other things that you might find interesting, um, you know, we pay the, our uh, facilities department to pay, uh, pays all the utilities uh, for most of the buildings on the county, so that's a pretty significant amount in our facilities budget, about two hundred, almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, one of the items you'll probably notice uh, in facilities is the R and M repair and maintenance, um, that's going up. Um, kinda, you know, by about fifteen thousand, and pretty much most of that is uh, due to uh, beginning this year, uh, that the jail asked us if our facilities crew could start uh, taking on some of the R and M uh, down in the jail. Uh, we said, hey, yeah, we'll try it for a year, see how it goes. Um, I think it went well, I think they would agree it went well as, also. Um, and they had fifteen thousand dollars in their budget for jail R and M, we've transferred that over to facilities. And what can I, some good, uh, you know, pods and uh, other issues that are on going down in the jail, um, so. Uh, we've had a reduction in uh, our maintenance contracts, uh, we're trying something new, uh, kind of this winter, uh, we started last winter, which is, um, uh, we're gonna be trying to maintain the parking lots and snow removal of those parking lots ourselves. Uh, we've got a vehicle that the sheriff was using for the animal shelter to plow that parking lot. We took that vehicle over, uh, kinda temporarily, uh, with the understanding that we would, uh, remove snow at courthouse, animal shelter, and some of our other facilities, um, and so that's, uh, most of the reduction there. Uh, you'll also notice that our training budget in facilities, we're proposing that to go up. Um, that's one of the things that I think, uh, we would really like to try to focus on, providing some good quality training for our staff, HVAC training, electric, electrical training, plumbing training, so that we don't have to rely so much on outside services, uh, when we need to do those types of repairs. So we'd like to get those, get our staff up to speed with that, uh, so that we can accomplish those things in-house. So, uh, if that goes well, uh, hopefully our outside services might see a reduction in future years.
Seems like you got a crush to me.
I think that was for the highlights for facilities. I'll be honest, uh, not too many changes, uh, except for some reductions in other areas, uh, maybe the other thing I'd like to highlight is, uh, just a pretty significant, uh, proposed increase in water, uh, for our water bank program. And, uh, that's a, a estimation of Henderson lease, uh, in upcoming year.
You're talking about an increase on the expense side?
Uh, no, on the revenue side, uh.
That man, I don't think we have the right number in here, what should that number?
It should be two hundred and twenty thousand, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so their number's right, it's, it's, you can see the estimate? I think the estimate of twenty-four is what driving that number in twenty-five.
Yeah, so.
Great. Are we dropping a contract next year or lowering our prices? Cause if we're estimating two sixty this year.
I don't, I'm gonna, I'm going, I'm trying to pull up the budget real quick, I think the number in twenty-four was budgeted lower, but we're estimated to bring in more, is my guess.
Well, I, I, I can finish the conversation by just saying, yes, good note, skip those numbers right.
Twenty-four? Budget, but we don't have the budget number.
Uh, the other ones, we have archivist. There's one FTE in there, we have mapping, how many FTEs are in mapping?
Three, three, yeah, one in archives, uh, three and mapping, uh, point nine in water resources, special projects. Um, and then four points five in facilities. And I'll just say that since two thousand seventeen, each one of these departments has reduced their FTE some significantly.
Thank you. How are you doing on vacancies?
Doesn't give us the. We currently have one open position in, uh, maintenance or in facilities, that's our maintenance tech position. And, uh, we're doing some interviews right now, what we've done recently, uh, actually what we did just in the last month or two, uh, we kind of reevaluated that position or that, that job description, and we've created two, uh, kind of positions for the, a level one and a level three. Um, so that we can potentially hire maybe some uh, it, it kinda gives us some flexibility to hire some people that might not have the expertise, but then after they've acquired some certifications or something, the ability to them up, or they might have the ability to hire, you know, and actually get somebody that has these certifications and, uh, knowledge and training.
So the plan is one of those two positions would be vacant?
Correct, well, yeah, one of those two positions, yeah, it's a maintenance tech, one and two. And so we've got two job descriptions, but only one position, one FTE that's available for that.
Think I have any other questions about internal services?
Randy, next.
I don't, after looking at it, I mean.
Good to move forward, thank you, Matt.
Public Works. Can we actually skip the whole rig of public health?
You wanna skip to public health?
Sorry, guys, Tim's got a.
I gotta leave it for if we get to. Wait, but.
Yeah, you got two big ones before then.
Go to public health, Dr. Ryan's.
First, it's seven.
Yep.
Andy? Uh, what to say? Public Health continues to operate well within budget. Um, while minimizing our impact on the general fund continually year over year. Uh, continues to professionalize our department. Uh, and to also, uh, provide additional services despite staying within our budget uh, in relying less and less on the general fund. Um, our, uh, ability to now, uh, fill for a lot of the services that we do provide um, is, um, growing and significantly growing from this year to last, last year being the first year that we were able to do that. Uh, we're trying to get credentialed, uh, with additional, um, insurance companies, and that's entirely and dependent on them in a, um, completely non-transparent way. We have no insight into whether, why they would accept us or not accept us, and one of them, uh, through Peter's help, thought we had a great conversation and we were on our way, and then the phone went blank, so. Um, we continue to try to add additional insurance carriers, um, to what we accept, um, so that we're not turning people away because of the insurance carrier that they have, but again, it's not dependent on us, it's entirely dependent on them. Um. We have, over the last several years, as you know, uh, reduced our staffing, um, we now have a staff of four within public health. Um, two or one and a half, uh, technically in environmental health, and then within, uh, Mountain Youth Network, uh, four or three point, three point eight or something like that, um, so continue to maintain those numbers, while additionally adding services. Um, we don't have any vacancies, um, and we're rolling along.
Thank you, I mean, I'm looking at here. Public Health, Mountain Youth Network, both are projected to bring in more revenue than you spend. Or in your twenty twenty-five budget. That is nice. I don't. I don't have any questions, Mitch, Randy?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Goal, uh, if it be known is to reduce our general fund, um, take as close to zero as humanly possible. Um, we're certainly have been headed in that direction for the last several years, and I think you do so through patients and insurance carrier pay. Um, and hope to continue to do that, so. That my presence at this meeting would be a moot point in the future, I'm going.
Correct.
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Still watching this show.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll show up to work every day.
Thanks, warming that chair all day so far.
Public Works.
Yeah, will you guys tell me where you are in Public Works? I think we're in fifty-six, right?
Page fifty.
Fifty, yeah, I'm. Yeah, just as you.
We occupy five pages.
I know, that's a lot.
Oh, you got a lot going on, five pages worth of budget here. Um, let's take this piece by piece, let's talk transit. Um, what do we need to know?
Yeah, happy to jump in, um, Transit is, is new to Public Works, um. They just came and joined us, um, at Public Works this year, and, uh, we welcome them, um. You know, that's, um, a total of four FTE that came over along with, uh, several shuttles to, um, the Public Works facility in Des Moines, joined us there. They've really been operating as they have in the, the past couple of years, we have, um, now, um, starting to, um, the staff's starting to mature a little bit, um, we're certainly learning a little bit about Transit, their Public Works. The, the current, um, Transit supervisor has been on staff all over a year now, and he's been through a, a lot of training over this past year, I'm learning a lot about local transit agencies and, um, in our system here, and at this point, we're, um, you know, operating as it has, um, the past couple of years, and, um, and now, I'm really, um, gonna put that training that, that we've been doing into use and, and really start to look at see how we can better serve the, the needs of the community here, and if there's opportunities to grow or change or whatever that's gonna be, um, we're, we're kinda ready to tackle some of those challenges.
Just for history, for the public's knowledge, uh, this board committed to subsidizing this program up to two hundred thousand dollars for two years, this coming year being the second of two years. Um. I believe this is a crucial service, Randy, I've heard you say that as well. Um. I wanna compliment you that the actual impact to the general fund appears to be a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, not two hundred thousand. Um. Yeah.
So less than the two hundred thousand proposed. Yeah, I, uh, my, uh, attitude on this remains the same as before, it's, it is a crucial service, it, it's, uh, or whether we're talking about, um, public health, opioid abatement, um, you know, behavioral and mental health services, and getting people moved around, transportation is key in a rural environment, uh, with vulnerable populations that tend to be less, to be more mobility challenged, and having ways for them to get where they need to go is, is really important, uh, when you don't have what they need close to them. So it's a, it's a big deal, and outcomes are a lot better when, uh, uh, George pointed out to me the other day, when we were talking about this after I've been in, uh, after we've both been down at the G Rock, and we talked about transportation, and he was citing evidence in other counties around that when they, uh, um, when they added transportation to the mix, public transportation to the mix, uh, and folded it into, uh, behavioral health accessibility, they've had thirty percent better outcomes, uh, to the, for those patients, and, uh, so it's, it's a little more than just being able to get to the grocery store, it's a big deal. And it's, uh, really important in people's lives, so I think it's a, it's a crucial thing to try to continue to have, and also to expand as we figure out how to solve this current temporary budget crisis. And, uh, you know, keep improving and, and improving services we can, so.
I think we appreciate that, I mean, we see the board's, um, desire to keep this um, program up and running. Um, I think, uh, sending the manager to these trainings this year, just learning what we did about compliance, uh, we just went through a recent um, office of direct audit, but, uh, definitely, uh, where they were onsite to bus stops and the training and the compliance with the drivers, um, licensing and testing, that kinda stuff. Shaw, Stoy, and I learned a lot through that process as well, as the manager for the bus group, uh, Snory. Um, so we're excited to keep going. Um, it has been a bit of a challenge just wrapping our heads around and learning how to move that over to our department for sure, and look at some different, uh, budgets that we've had to this year, but, um, you know, still wanna move forward looking at where are these transportation grants are available and how we can, uh, work through some of that and to keep, um, things well within the budget that the board has given this department. Looking at streamlining or expanding routes depending on what our ridership looks like for routes like Loveland or Evergreen, just to see if they're beneficial or if we need to localize that more and stay within the category, but just looking at some open-minded ideas, we're going towards that in the future as well.
Okay. I really agree with Randy about the value of this program, and I, I just have to acknowledge that it is not statutorily required. Um, and Brian, you have said this multiple times today. Current revenues don't match expenditures, so changes need to be made somewhere. It's likely we're gonna be going to the voters to ask them what kinda services they want, and it's likely that this is gonna be one of the services that they have the option to fund. I don't know that I have anything else to say.
Uh, thank you for that, Dominic. It, it seems that, um, ridership numbers and things like that used to get pushed out, I haven't seen them recently. Um, I'll just, I'll just share that, it always helped me, convinced me when I wasn't here that the, the whole program made sense, because I could see it grow. Um, we'd have to contract every now and then because we didn't have drivers, but, uh, overall.
But overall, it looked like program was expanding its capacity and serving more and more people. At least more and more rides, maybe the seven up repeat.
Yeah, and I, I know our municipal partners greatly value this program. And maybe I can help.
Yeah, we are certainly looking forward to exploring some new partnerships with municipalities, with our, our local businesses. And, and to, you know, support them, how we can best serve them and, and other where in the, the community. And yeah, we'll certainly find the best venue to kind of publish those ridership numbers. We did take a look at the first six months of 2024 and we're up about 10 to 12% on ridership this year. We're not tracking those individuals, so I'm not sure if it's the same riders, just riding more often or, or if we have new, new riders there. But it is continuing to grow and we are with the support of the Board of County Commissioners along with these grant programs. Updating the, the shuttle fleet. We're bringing in, expecting anytime they're a little overdue along with other manufactured vehicles. But. Excuse me, our, we've got two new shuttles that are doing anytime that are gonna be a little bit of an upgrade, four-wheel drive. So they kind of get around and then serve this area a little bit better in our road system. And looking forward to incorporating, incorporating them into the fleet and then included in our 2025 budget is that 50/50 grant match. For another shuttle to completely update our fleet of three shuttles. And, and, and yeah, just looking forward to continue to grow and, and, and find other ways we can serve the community here. With, again, local businesses, municipalities, as well as the regional transit authorities that. Come through here and have their stops here. We're looking at better ways to kind of link up with them and kind of make sure that. We don't have redundant systems and we're able to kind of match up with them, kind of get people outside of our area as well.
And is, is local transportation still a requirement for bus staying?
As far as bus tank providing any kind of local.
Yeah, I, I, I could be wrong. I thought I remembered that originally we didn't qualify for bus staying because we didn't have local transportation. I'm just curious if that's still a requirement.
I, I believe that it is. I do know, and Amy might be able to speak to that, but I believe that it is. But beyond that, we're also seeking probably in conjunction with some of the. Projects that are going on in I-70, we're gonna be asking, my guess is we're gonna be asking of CDOT to increase. Bus stand and Pegasus service in the county, at least to try to get another stop, try to get a little more service here. And it's been valuable and it would be more valuable if they, if we had more than one spot in the county where they stop. And, and they don't right now. And so I think it's about time we tried to make that happen, which means we're, we're gonna need to continue to keep that, keep up. Our own local service that can integrate with that.
I don't know if it's temporary right now, but bus station has two stops and I know Springs right now they've been. Doing for the last. Month, I believe they're stopping at come and go and they're stopping again at the. Old Post Office Resource Center. They're overlapping our bus route.
Okay, good. Good, I wasn't aware of that. I know one of the things we've talked about, two of the spots we've talked about are Georgetown and then. I know that it was ruled out as part of the Floyd Hill project, but I can't imagine that there won't eventually be Pegasus service at least on Floyd Hill. With or without the ability to get in, ride into the express lane westbound, it's still valuable to be, be available for that hill. Once enough people agree they'd like to see the service.
Amy was shaking her head yes to Mitch's question about local transit being required for bus tanks.
Thank you. He, he could see her, I couldn't. She's hiding behind the post.
She picked that chair.
Okay, so then site development, I have an observation. Anything you wanna, you wanna say about site development?
Yeah, site development, you know, is a, you know, critical part of our development, you know, process here in, in Clear Creek County. You know, we work closely with, with the rest of the development departments and, you know, and helping our. Development to kind of get, get built in a responsible manner and make sure that, that, you know, we're not minimizing. You know, impacts to adjacent properties and, and other areas through these development processes. We have an engineering technician, one full-time employee that works for our site development there. He's been with us also a little bit more than a year and, and it's been, been a great resource for the department as well as kind of. You know, linking up with, with the other departments and working really well with, with other building services. So, so we think it's, I think it's going really well inside development there and it's, you know. We, we offer a lot of services from, you know, the, the permitting services for development. You know, flood plain management as well as. You know, again, just helping. The, the whole development community kind of get through the process. We get a lot of, a lot of calls, you know, we've got. I, 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 I do want to just highlight site development because we're often. Highlight, you know, the challenging topography we have here in Clear Creek County and the site development department is critical and kind of. Helping manage development projects on our steep slopes and, you know, the, you know, narrow valleys and, and all of that. And it's, it is a real challenge for us administratively as well as the development community. And I think we've, we've made some, some really good strides along with the rest of the development departments and kind of helping developers kind of come here and, and manage some of these challenging. Areas.
Thank you.
I, I do see, one other thing I just wanted to say, I look at. Not site, now I'm in road. Road maintenance, maintenance of condition and I noticed that asphalt gravel and striping all went up. Assume the former three are cost of the goods or is that just more work that we're doing in that area right now?
Sorry, moving on.
Which page? I think he's on fifth.
I, I want to wrap up development site with one quick comment. I would love to see our fees equal a revenue estimate that matches our expenses. I would love to pass a budget that has that, looks like you need about 35% increase.
Understand, and I did hear Brian mention earlier that I think the rest of the development teams are working on our, our fee schedules there. We'll jump on board with them and, and take a look. We did our last analysis, it's been several years ago really that we last looked at our fees for site development. So we'll try to update those and, and bring them to the board along with the rest of the fee schedules.
Sure, I jumped in.
No, that's okay. Do you wanna, while it's fresh, to run, we're gonna go back to transportation?
Uh, no, let's just go through in order and I'll do it then. Sorry. I was just rolling forward and got ahead of myself.
Transportation. I'll, I'll open with the same observation about the fees.
Yes, we actually are working on that right as we speak. Think our target is to try and get them in front of the board at the December 17th board meeting. So we can roll into next year with a. Fee schedules change and. Start working directly with our new facilities manager that started two weeks ago today. Yeah, so far so good. We've got a. A lot of repairs and some issues over there, everything from working with IT on the broadband and just struggles that we have with. Strength of the internet and whatnot in that valley. We've also got a lot of repairs to do on some of the equipment. Mainly the containers for hauling stuff and whatnot. I've got some of those in next year's budget.
Are, are we gonna fix the, the cardboard contractor in next year's budget?
That phase converter has not been ordered, but we have located and found the best solution for that particular piece. Because that is an older piece of equipment that the industry's kind of moved away from. So we've looked at some different. Items to use in place of that, but I think for the $4,000 that, that phase converter and the work. Put that back together is definitely worth our time and effort on that. Those things have all been. Worked on to a point, haven't really pulled the trigger on all of that because kind of waiting to get through this process and see. Where we're at with direction from the board and just what. As far as moving the needle forward on the transfer station and operations. You know, being over budget, just how well that's received and what we can do moving forward to. Working in that direction. Again, another facility that's not statutorily required by the county. Statute, but definitely something that I. Get direction from the board up to this point. I think moving forward that we're. In the long haul with that facility and want to keep it running as efficiently and smoothly as we can.
How are your teams gonna be picking it all up on the side of the road where it gets dumped?
Yep, we do see that when we do partial closures. There's a lot of things that go into that. Fee schedule change too can generate some of that activity around. Between the road and bridge, the front and end. Station, kind of keep ahead of that as well. We will certainly.
I think you have a strong story to tell, but it's getting more expensive because it needs to pay for itself and we value our employees.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the industry, we, we brought the last fee schedule change in front of the board. In early 2023, I think it was May of 23. And we were probably behind at that point even moving pricing as far forward as we did for that one. Which was about a 10 to 12% increase at that point in time. We're at a point where we need to. Move that forward again and probably substantially more than that potentially. And there's a lot of things we're losing money on just letting it come in through the gates.
I think so, and I'd love to be in a fiscal environment where we could subsidize this. I don't think that's where we are right now.
I think also that, I know you don't want to hear this, but Carl just mentioned 1219 for bringing the fees. And I think we're adopting, hopefully adopting a budget on a 10. And we'd like to adopt a budget with the increased fees inside of it already, I think, so.
It's the hopes, yeah.
So maybe we bring the fees the same, the same meeting. But anyway, I just want to put that out there that.
Yeah, I think, I don't know that we actually put that on the ticker as of this week, but I believe that meeting's the 17th.
Yeah, which means that's a week after budget adoption.
Okay.
So.
Bringing that to the board as an action.
Right.
Session.
I'd, I'd like to raise it up, raise it up from being a hope to be an act, an expectation.
Yeah. And like conversely, not, not like just the other side of this coin is that I think what you're hearing from this board is whether it comes on the 10th or the 17th, we're gonna vote for it so you can budget for it.
Well, and we, we may be able to.
I, I would accept that.
Accelerate that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk.
Yeah, we're certainly working on it. That's a priority one right now.
There are some items that, you mentioned a couple of items already ticked off. George mentioned the cardboard.
You know.
Yes. Stopper and also that you mentioned the containers, the boxes for hauling. And, you know, that's, that's the one thing I've seen and heard and heard from staff up there is, you know, they're actually burning more time with it. Because it's taking more work to get those doors open and closed as they're so beat up right now. So there are some things we can do that are expenditures that actually save money in the long run. It'll, the maintenance, hopefully the maintenance cost would. Or the operating cost would be significantly reduced and paid for itself. I don't know how soon you would have a better feel for that. I also heard about some single stream or at least streamlined, there's some ways just to. Run this, that are happening in a bunch of places for running recycling. Have you, have you guys had any conversation about trying to revise your recycling line?
Yes.
Good.
Yep, we had, we had some issues last weekend just again with. Electrical surges and had our local electrician on site. And got a company coming up to review and look at the two compactors that we do have working at this point in time. See. You know, if they just need maintenance or if there's something else going on there. It's been an interesting year with the, with Ward Electric in town. Working as a contractor for Excel, we've changed something like 27 or 28 power poles in that. Soda Creek Valley between there and Little Bear and we've been disrupted. A number of times and it's just caused some interesting. Kind of unpredictable terms with the, with the power supply to the facility. Which has cost us a, a bit of a challenge.
I think it's about how many poles they did around my house.
You know, but I do, I think some of the stuff was let go too long, but I mean, we have a good handle on what needs to be replaced and what. And how we can operate that. This new facilities manager has a Class A CDL and is ready to jump in. And share that load with our, our on-staff driver right now as well. The second or backup roll-off truck is down at Rush Truck Centers right now, having. The TARP system replaced and rebuilt, so we've got some expenditures there. Think we've got funds to probably pick up a couple of bins, 2024 budget before we roll into 2025. As well as that phase converter for the. Cardboard compactor. And then as we get into next year with the fee schedule change, hopefully that'll balance things out. We've got funding in this. Operating equipment line. For three or four more bins and then. We'll see, you know, just as repairs to some of the older ones who we can still use as backups and whatnot. But the other thing we've really looked at as far as traffic flow and. Not necessarily educating the public, but signing. The facility better to keep flow and direction going. And then also working towards making sure we capture resident, non-resident. Personnel coming through the doors as customers, do some different ideas floating around about how to best do that and. Take the onus off the staff to be chasing everybody around the facility, sure things are being done or going. Supposed to be done.
I had a similar experience when I was running a volunteer compost program. And a lot of stuff. Okay, road and bridge? Andy, you had a question?
On the revenue side on that stuff. Next page.
Yeah, and Randy, you had brought, you mentioned the gravel line and.
Down on expenditures, yeah. I didn't know if we wanted to look at revenues or not, maybe not. I, I mentioned gravel, asphalt and striping all went up. Guardrail went down. That's all I saw. Those are the big changes. I mean, they're not huge changes, but you know, 50,000 here. Thousand there.
Most of that's driven by the industry itself. We have found that we, our striping budget's probably half of what it should be. What we've been doing over the past several years is we do the east side of the county and the west side of the county in alternate years. And if you drive the east side right now, you'll notice that it needs to be striped and it wasn't, so it will get done immediately. When next year's contract opens, but we've added to that line to try and keep up with striping the entire county as we. At least as much of it as we can.
Okay.
You know, basically a traffic safety, public safety issue for sure. Guardrail, we have not added new guardrail. I don't know, we have a line. For guardrail repairs, which we are still planning to bring to the board. Of contract here before the annual years.
It, it's a little less than is required to, to bring for the board, so we're gonna ask our county manager to sign off on that contract for us. But we, we have been through the, the bid process and, and, and plan to award our guardrail repair project. To Ideal Fencing and just working through the, the final process for the contracting on that, but hope to get them in and, and do all our guardrail repairs. No new guardrails, Carl said, but we've just got several areas of damaged guardrail that we're gonna be repairing.
And dropping down into snow and ice removal, I just note a radical drop in salaries and wages. For under snow and ice removal, drop of course also in benefits and. But then a big capital cost down on. At the, on the bottom line under snow and ice. And I'm curious about the, 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 like cutting, it's, I mean, you're down to about. Yeah, um.
Yeah, no, I see that, um.
Yeah, that's still you down to about forty percent of what you were, I think, or less.
Can I be a typo?
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna.
Play the typo.
Ask Rachel if she could step in with that because our, it's sometimes a little confusing or hard to read because it is split between maintenance of condition and snow and ice. Yeah, so we could have the same budget lines in.
Yeah, I'm.
Both sides of the budget.
Sorry to make everybody unhappy. I just thought I'd point that out.
No, I appreciate that. Now, the other thing is um. If you look in. Maintenance and conditions, salaries and wages, one of the um, concerns that um. Carol Ann brought up were the number of locations that we have information in. Carol lives in a one location. Um, her compensation plan lives in another. There's a whole host of non-cross walking conversations that take place between all of the structures, so what. Happened in human services on the salary side in this is also the case with the Road and Bridge. The accounts hit with staff aren't necessarily accurately reflected. The totals per fund are correct. But where those positions live within a salary. Line could be off, so I have to go back with Caroline and look line by line by line on your person.
It appears to me, it appears to me it's just in the wrong line that you're taking some of, of ice remove, snow and ice removal.
Yeah.
Put it up into maintenance, salaries and wages, because that's just missing under maintenance, it's almost doubled.
Yeah, right.
And the other ones dropped.
That's what it looks like to me. And something else just to keep in mind, um, you know, the. The lion's share of these increases. With salaries and benefits, the operations team, Road and Bridge has already received. A good portion of that.
Hmm.
Not the entire department. But the uh. Operational group. Equipment operators.
The salary increase, you mean, yeah. So therefore, we shouldn't have seen it double. Under.
Correct.
Under maintenance of condition. Okay.
But it includes staff, if I may. It includes staff that probably don't belong in that line either.
I'm just curious about weed control. Were we outsourcing that to another county and now it's back in our pocket?
Um, let's see, we still have a fifty thousand dollar.
Yes.
There. Um, what we had done, or I had done, is uh, we were able to tag on to Summit County's. Uh, weed department here. Two years ago. And. This past year with uh, reaching back out to them and negotiating, they're going through the same issues that our county is as well. They've. Uh, basically stripped that team, which was eight people in. Twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one. Um. I think they have a. Year-round manager who shares a position where he switches in the winter to work on a different department. And then he brings in seasonal people, kind of like uh. Clifford County used to do years ago. Uh, they will not support us anymore. They just don't have the people to do it. Um, so. I've. Um. Had discussion with Foot Hills. Uh, weed control, which also works with our trails team. So uh, John Butcher and I have a meeting coming up with them to talk about potential contracts next year for the county right away. And open space and some of the trailheads that we uh, manage as well. Um. Weed control, not just weed control in the state is statutory requirement. Um. The enforcement of that, as far as I've seen. Some of the other rural counties that don't do it at all or don't have a weed department. The state does not seem to um, follow through on. Any kind of follow-up on that, but uh. We did not do any weed control this past season. So we're not complying in that aspect too, but we're certainly working towards um. At least trying to confirm our uh. Roll into another contract with one of these front range weed control companies to do um, at least the uh. The minimum, which we did the last uh, two years with uh, for the last several years with. Summit County with just spraying not just weeds in the. Right away of our maintained and non-maintained roads. So that is a placeholder in hopes for that contract. Um, the first year I worked with Summit County. We spent thirty thousand dollars. Then the second year that they rolled that into uh, coming over here and spraying. Early and a mid-season force, they just capped that at fifty thousand. We basically paid for the man-hours and the uh, herbicides that they use for that.
Okay.
Might be worth talking to Gilpin County.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're up to. Um. There was a time when we had like a local team and, and the weed manager um, provided a pretty high level of service. I mean, he would. He would kind of eyeball people's properties. I remember him telling my mother that she, and therefore I, had to go tear out a bunch of Chinese climatus on my hill.
I think that was a, was a pretty proactive team at that point in time.
Yes, we were famous for our hori crest and uh, unfortunately he uh, took out a, a little bit of the. We had, we had to negotiate what methods were used to get rid of it because we lost vegetation to the. The same herbicide that was killing the hori crest.
Of course.
We lost, lost a little bit of it.
Yeah, and I mean, the room that don't know, I mean, we did have full-time, year-round employee and in that twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen. Uh. Timeframe with the budget crunch, um, the road bridge department. Also cut about eight positions. That was one. It was offered to be a seasonal position, which our manager at the time um, denied to take. And since then that was dissolved, but uh, it used to run year-round, mostly grant-funded and subsidized um, through road bridge. And uh, we'd bring in four. Summer um, spray technicians, run on a seasonal basis like that.
Yeah, we did a good job of saving our time by uh, coming on the property and taking care of stuff while relieving us of the burden of having invited him.
That work, because he would get reimbursed by the municipalities and he did a bunch of C-DUP. Right away too, so there was ways to generate some revenue there.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, that, yeah, I, I would love to get us back to that level of service. Obviously, that's not happening in this budget. Um. I'm gonna skip right to way. Construction. My only question on construction, I, I know this number moves a lot because those are big capital projects. Are we keeping up with? The, we, we conducted a study on all of our paved roads and we put together a schedule of when we were gonna pave roads to keep up. Are we keeping up with that schedule?
For the most part, yes, it is a bit of a moving target, but um, but, but for the most part, yes, and um, and then to um. Add on to that, you know, we did that study several years ago and kind of prioritized the roads at that point. You know, um, they aren't all um, degradating. Um, at, at the same rate that, that we assumed that they would, so um, so we um, are now, um, we've contracted with the company, another evaluation company to go out and. And actually do an, another analysis of all of our paved roads, um, all of our um, maintained paved roads across Clifford County. And so they're uh, doing an analysis of that, they'll score all those roads and we will then reprioritize them and kind of. Reset that uh, that priority list of, of how we'll, we'll kind of move through our, our road system with construction projects and, and, and. Primarily uh, repaving projects there. We're doing that. They're also gathering imagery for us, uh, which we're lacking in a lot of areas, uh, really just uh. Along with uh, doing the, the pavement analysis, they're, they're collecting some imagery um, that will give us a lot more insights um, on our road system, um. And then um, collecting some sign inventory and other asset inventory for us as they're, I'm doing the study so that we're gonna have a better. Understanding of, of our assets and our needs uh, to kind of maintain those assets going forward, so. Um, in short, yes, we are um, on track with the, the, the study, the previous study that we did and keeping up with that. And uh, but we do expect to get new results from the study that we're doing this year that may lead to some minor reprioritization of, of our road projects.
Okay. I'm worried about that just because of cost acceleration. Um. We passed that, that sales tax at a time right before there was this extreme acceleration in costs, right? Um, so thank you. I think that's it. Uh, and, but colleagues.
Good.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's, strategic and community planning. Amy Saxton. Two more, and then ambulance.
It's less.
Capital improvement plan.
I had a couple.
And we get to try to still understand the big picture.
I know. Big white.
Ship numbers.
Draw. Big white. Straw your stuff on it. Hi.
Hi. Um. Thank you for being here. You have the kind of uh, complicated budget that I think. Maybe we want to take piece by piece as well. Do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, I think. First, it is housing. Is it, I don't think it actually is labeled, so um. Uh, and there, uh, because our housing coordinator retired. And because we're forming a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, we are not planning on rehiring the housing coordinator, and so that budget has no expenses. Um, aside, associated with it, the plan is to um. Transfer resident services to the MGH A one form. And um, and just as a reminder, I mean, our housing program was basically limited to resident support services. We did not. Offer any county. Programs if, that were supportive of housing. They were, they were connecting people with other programs. Which is an important thing to do, and we do plan on having, you know, JHA provide that work going forward. So that's the housing budget.
So where does the cost of the housing authority show up in the budget?
That's what I'm wondering too.
The cost of the housing authority is intended to be covered by lodging tax.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the question is where is it in the budget?
So that's the revenue, but where's the expense?
It's, it's under the component government, the, the component. Agencies.
Okay.
One page is, sorry. Well, that's where the Clifford Creek Housing Authority is, but not the expenses for the multi-jurisdictional housing partner contribution. Um, technically, we have not signed an MGH A for that yet, so I, I don't, I'm, I don't know how to.
Did you build it in? Our contribution?
I think the answer to.
I did not.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I walked out for a second. I didn't even hear the question.
I think the answer to the question is that we have a revenue, we have one revenue line item. Lodging tax, and I don't see breakdown of the use of that lodging tax in this.
No.
That's.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so like I.
So that's a better global observation.
Because you're right, because that's where it's coming from, is lodging tax.
But we don't.
So I would.
Have it at any place.
Right, right, right.
Um. Three thousand dollars of out-of-balance.
Oh, yeah, that's where I'm.
In, in a different fund. Okay, right. I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize your.
Attribution.
Um.
Is the expenditure showing up somewhere?
I thought, I thought I saw it earlier.
Yeah.
I saw it earlier.
For all of the uses of that lodging tax. If we're, if we're logging the income, we need to log the expenditure that's. Connected to it. And so that's why I had the same kind of like sudden dizzy spell that uh, Mitch did.
Right here, page forty-six.
Thank you.
On depart.
There's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Budgeted for childcare and affordable housing.
Okay.
I missed that.
For expenditure, okay, all good.
Spend you.
It's in here.
I knew it was in there. Sorry, I walked out.
Perfect. Any other questions on?
I see it's on the bottom of the page, very last line.
Yep.
I'm going back to strategic and community planning. My blood pressure's back down.
Okay.
Everything. It's all good. Don't want it to go too far. It actually got down to sixty-something over forty-six a couple of times.
Oh. Sounds scary, actually.
That was, that's a little on the low side.
Okay, so that covers housing.
Planning and building services.
And services, a lot of changes here. I think we know why.
So um. We've had a lot of um, a lot of changes on this, and I, I don't want to go into too many of them now, if it's okay with you, because we have a work section. For November fifth to um, go into great detail about. The structural changes that have taken place and, and our current changes. Uh, what I do want to draw your attention to is um, in um, planning and building, we have um. We do, we will be bringing to you a proposal for um, fee amendments that, that are reflected in this budget. Um, currently. That have two big changes that are reflected in this budget. One is a fee amendment that is based on cost of delivery. And um, so that is uh, something you've, we've talked to you a little bit about before in some other settings. And the other thing that is reflected in that increase in building permit revenue is an expansion of services to include Georgetown and Idaho Springs in our building department.
Right.
So that um. Uh, reflects a rather large increase in revenue on that front. Um, and it is a calculated base explicitly using a multiplier on our expenses to deliver building services.
What's, yeah, what's the big increase in miscellaneous fees I see there?
Um.
Down right below the building permits.
Uh.
Always from two thousand to sixty-five thousand miscellaneous.
And the contractor licensing?
That would be the contractor licensing.
Okay.
Is. And um, there is also some additional inspection fees related to uh, annual inspections that will be requiring as part of a short-term rental. Um. Program. And then speaking of the short-term rental program, I also want to just note that there's also fee increases that we'll be proposing as part of the short-term rental ordinance that are also included in this budget right now. That change, that was, that's a change of a hundred thousand to a hundred and ninety-three thousand. Um, so that. Is a several significant fee increases.
Mm-hmm.
Are included in planning and building. Um. Um, minor expense increase um, is that we are proposing adding um, purchasing a drone. That will include, that will improve our ability to safely conduct roof inspections and things like that. Um, for a thousand dollars. Um.
Do we have a question?
No, not until, I thought she had finished, but she hasn't.
That's, that's planning and building, unless you have any other questions about that.
Is it reasonable to expect planning and building fees to equal the expenses for the department?
Um, well, for planning and building fees, so what we have not yet done is assess the planning fees, and so that is to come, and um. Uh. We, I, we also will likely in future years separate the planning and building departments. We used to have them separated and then with the most recent restructure, we combined them. And. But now we, now we are likely going to separate them again, and then um, at that time, we may be able to um, cover expenses. Um. To get, we should be able to get quite a bit closer. But we have not yet, we've done the same process that we did with building fees to the planning fees, so that yet, that, that work has not been done yet.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge that from last year, where you had about a four hundred thousand dollar. Deficit, you're moving to something that's closer to a hundred, so thank you.
That was, it, it, it's, it takes quite a bit of time to, to pull these changes off. They do take um, ordinances or resolutions, okay, which take. input and multiple readings, so it does, it does take quite a bit of time.
Attorneys.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Anything else on planning and building? Um, and the strategic and community planning department is, 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 um, do you have any questions about that?
That's basically, that's.
Basically my department, yeah, just me. Animal Services, um. So, uh. But these is not something we reviewed yet. In this department, we're looking at um. Whether it's appropriate to look at these, the towns that are within the county. Or whether we should be able to provide services to the towns based as, as part of our county services. Um. Doing research on how many. What kind of how many animals are um. As far as holding facility services, how many animals are from Gilpin? How many animals are from Central City? How many animals are from? Each of the different governmental units and and trying to do an analysis on um. Whether and how those should be covered by the county overall, and that the county should be covering the municipal provision of of holding facility services or. Just how we can look at a change to the way fees are considered for providing holding facility services across multiple governmental entities. Um. We did, you know, just take a we did include the full staff of the shelter to discuss the budget to make sure that we were looking at each line item. With as much information as possible, so any change is um, year over year this year, we're informed by staff. Um, and what they needed and um, so.
Is animal services? Is this the shelter only, or is this the shelter and animal with control?
This is the shelter only.
Sheriff's modified those positions to community service officers. And it was the animal control in the sheriff's office.
They're still conducting that service though, right? Animal control. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Three more.
But they can be expanded to do some other things, which we're talking with them with respect to other code enforcement.
Okay.
The animal shelter. Did not include several capital improvements, like they need their commercial appliances replaced. And they have some issues with the lack of a vehicle that requires staff to transport animals in their car and personal vehicles at times, you know, which is. A bueno. Um, and we're working on solutions for that, but um. We did get a capital repair included to do some upgrades to the kennels that will make a difference there, so um. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, this one clearly. Clearly, adoption fees are not going to cover this gap, and so.
Right.
I just want to make sure that that I've been trying to bring that expectation everywhere. I don't think they can bring it here.
Right.
I I do think we can increase that fee and should, but I it's not going to get us. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and to be clear with the current staffing. Levels, there's not any capacity for providing for for an adoption program. At three point with with the staff level, there basically is no adoption program. And they are basically only able to provide holding facility services right now and um. They are occasionally able to. Bring in one animal for adoption at a time, but there is not the option to to run an adoption program at any level.
So I have a question uh, under expenditures on that under animal services. I see that salaries and wages has gone up by approximately twenty nine thousand dollars. But benefits went down by about ten thousand five hundred dollars, and I'm trying to reconcile this too.
And I unfortunately can't give you any detail on that.
But I would assume that means somebody made modification to their benefits themselves.
Yeah.
Or with the recent with the replacement of a position they made a change?
I'm just saying that, yeah, I mean, I don't know how they did it. I don't know if. But salaries and wages usually is not contract services, and so if salaries and wages went up, what I've noticed is in every other category. That salaries and wages and benefits went up by a proportion. And in this case, one it went up thirty thousand dollars for an increase of about twenty percent. Um. Uh, and uh, but the uh. Uh. But the benefits went down. By about uh. Sixteen percent.
So as Rachel explained earlier. Uh, this is because the the way that we calculate benefits with the analysis system by person, and that person could have changed their price. And the manager of the shelter, that position was misclassified and. Wide a distance between where it is now compared to currently based on analysis. So that's the explanation for the increase.
Okay, is is.
The assistance were quite there. Far out creation.
Okay, it's just kind of an almost. That's why I ask. Okay.
Yeah, on the team of six, if one person who has three kids getting benefits. Exits the organization and someone shows up with no kids.
Big change.
Expensive benefits.
Family is huge difference.
Huge swing.
Yeah. But um. Does the addition of that unfunded F T E enable the adoption program to?
It certainly could could make that a lot more possible, yes.
But we're not going to adopt enough dogs to have fees for adoption fees pay for that additional position, aren't we?
I don't believe so, no.
You can see me trying to figure out how to get that position.
Okay.
Um. Let's go to recreation.
Uh, so recreation, I would point out the increase in um, rafting fees. We're bringing you a proposal on that as well, um, and I that has potential um. In twenty twenty five to increase further. Um, and and actually, that proposal may be a little bit light because it was based on what we brought to you. Excuse me, what you recommended to us will um. Will further increase the revenue because you you asked us, you directed us to uh, charge for both. Embarkation and disembarkation locations. Um. And what is in the works right now is um, developing a lease with C dot that would allow us to include. She Bear's location, which is um. So it's. Add significantly to the uh. Limits of our permit program and in expand the amount of uh, disembarkation locations in particular. Um, so I would expect that number to increase a little bit. Um. Also, one thing that is not on here that I just realized Rachel is the um. That might need to be here is in the transfer to other funds would be the Conservation Trust Fund.
It's in there.
It is?
It's in the.
Okay.
All the funds, yeah.
Oh.
It's.
In the one fifty three?
No. It's in the all funds.
To end.
Under finance now.
Oh.
Yeah.
But wouldn't it?
It's a transfer out.
I saw that as a transfer out, but um, wouldn't it go as a transfer in to?
Right, it shows up here in, sorry, it it does show that it's a ten eighty four. Ten eight, ten eight four oh, so let me look at your budget really quick. You see that one?
Yeah, it's ten, it's true, it's eight fifty.
Or eight fifty, right, so it's in the eight forty. So what it does is it hits a transfer out, which is a combined eight forty, and then I have to walk it. I have I have it over to yours.
Okay.
But it is, there's nowhere else it could go but into yours.
Okay.
That's going to increase the one fifty three number. Yeah.
So that that should eventually change that one fifty.
Yes.
Right, okay. Because just that would um. Point out the um. The Conservation Trust Fund, which is fifty ish thousand. Of lottery funds is um. You do use that to cover um, expenses for the for the recreation. And the trails crew budget. Um. So. Hopefully, that that gets this budget also a little bit closer to. Even it's not going to get us all the way to even, but um, between um, some rafting revenues. Um. The transfer from the open space fund, which is about fifty percent of benefits. Uh, based on looking at actual hours, the trails crew spends on open space designated lands. That we use that as a calculation to identify how much money the open space fund transfers to the general fund to cover trails crew work. Uh. We're gonna, we know, we get pretty close to cover covering um. Well, you know, seventy ish percent, sixty five percent, something like that. Which means. That's. Expense reduction or F T E cuts or looking at the rails crew, which is another statutorily not reflect.
So.
Well, it does introduce savings. It doesn't introduce dollar for dollar savings. They're offset by open space funds, conservation trust funds, or fee revenue.
Yeah, um. And I know, like, now we have some ongoing obligations, right? Like, we're committed to maintain. Uh, we're committed to maintaining, I think, in a contract like for revenue. Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, right?
Do not have a contract with um, for Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, but that's certainly something that is. Potentially in the works and it has been in discussed, it's been discussed with Idaho Springs multiple times and is something that they may well be interested in.
Um, does the board agree with me that that? Idaho Springs helping cover our costs on the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park is something we should think about insisting on?
Well.
Well, we're not doing maintenance on that trail right now. We we're not providing services. Sorry to interrupt you, Randy, but just. We're not doing that, but we it's something that we would be would entertain. Developing a relationship with Idaho Springs to provide.
How much of that park lies? In unincorporated county? And how much of the park lie is owned? By the city, either within city limits or in unincorporated county, because if it's owned by the city. And or. Is in the city limits. It's not really our thing to have to worry about, and they should be honestly responsible for the upkeep and maintenance entirely. Not just to help us, but to ask us if we want to help them or something like that.
As I understand it, it's a hundred percent in city limits.
Yeah, because they.
There's a lot of nodding going on with that.
And it was a.
What we would, what we could potentially do is for contract paid services. Provide our expertise as the trails crew.
As long as there's not any burden to the county at all for doing that, that's kind of where I would be.
Right, I mean, if they were.
If I were still a county commissioner.
You're paying, yeah. And they they have, you know, we they have expressed interest in that.
Apparently, we're not doing work there. We're not obligated.
No.
Work there.
No.
Almost covering that or something, okay.
Yeah, that they, yeah, it's it's a city initiative uh, on city property in the city limits, so I understand it.
What we have had is a relationship with the Forest Service where they have. Provide paid us for work on Forest Service trails. Twenty twenty five, those funds will not be available due to the closure of uh. Mount Blue Sky. They will not be collecting the gate revenue that they would normally have and which was the surplus of that that annual twenty five K. In future years, I would expect that to resume.
Okay.
We found the um, inner fund transfer is in there already.
It's in that one fifty three number.
Transfers from other funds.
Because the transfer out of the. Oh, what spaces one twenty three.
Oh. That seems low, okay.
It's great if it's low.
So there's some options here, right? Like, add add some services. Think about whether we're doing work on federal land without being paid for it. The answer is probably no in our fiscal environment. I don't know if the board agrees with me on that. Um.
Wait, and will you say that again?
Like, like, the options that we have when we're thinking about the trails crew is. You know, not do work on federal land that we're not paid for, right? That would reduce workload. Maybe that saves us a seasonal F T E. Maybe maybe we increase the work by doing Virginia Canyon Mountain Park work. Uh, it's those are some of the options that I have in my head. I don't know if those affect the budget, but um.
Yeah, as far as a policy goes on the first one named, I mean, first of all, I'm I'm completely support us not enduring any. Uh, burden or any unreasonable burden. There are places where. There are trails that exist on the two, and a collaborative approach is important, and so there there can be a little bleed one way or the other, where we do something and that we do something here and they do something there. Depends on what the collaborative arrangement is, but I but I would advocate that going forward that a policy would be to. There isn't any uh, there isn't any capacity, financial capacity within the county to. Do any significant contribution to the Forest Service because they can't afford it. Like, you know, but it but there will undoubtedly be collaborative efforts uh, on. On on places where county owned trails uh, intersect or turn into forest service trails, that kind of stuff. And and neither one can afford it, so they figure out together how to how to make it happen.
Okay, um. Obviously, of note, we have a Rob plan. There's this this doesn't really fund much in there, right?
No, we don't. We have not put forward a, you know. Funding for grant matches or um, any any specific plans. Because they have not been identified as a gap, but yes.
I don't mean that as a routine.
I'm. Um, not taken that way at all.
Good. Just I just want to observe that there are services that are not in this budget that I know people. Would love to see.
Yeah.
Um. Open space trust fund. So I I will point out this is a. Independent fund. Um. And I see that it's also underwater this year. Is this is this a structural issue or is this a temporary issue?
This is a strategic choice by the Open Space Commission. Um, again, for the second year in a row, they are recommending basically deficit spending. Um. Being at um. Projects that are. Exceeding the amount of the mill that is eligible for development and maintenance expenditures. And um. Uh, you know, I think that they, the Open Space Commission is is. Becoming very, very much more effective as they as they've continued to evolve and working on. Thinking strategically about how to um, move forward and develop a more coherent plan for the future. But right now, the um, the contribution that they make to the open to the general fund to find half the trails crew. Um. Uses up along with that and then um, paying half of Martha's salary, half of the open space coordinator, open space and that coordinator salary. Um, exceeds the uh, forty percent of the mill. And so. They're basically kind of automatically upside down, and so then if they want to. Note that the Iron Fund needs an investment in um. Protect protective trails to address the usage that's there, or they want to identify. They want to improve interpretive signage for the sheepkeeper or, you know, whatever. Their uh, mission indicates as priorities. There's no funding for that, so. Um, I think this is to hear about on eleven fourteen when we have a joint meeting with the Space Commission. Um, to look at. A longer term strategy to figure out how to within the available funds and think about. Options.
Right. I think looking at the overall fund, looking at both this. Management fund, uh, the trust fund. And then dropping down to the top the next page and looking at the acquisition fund. Although there aren't, there there could be identified acquisitions that are requested that aren't on the radar right now. There is a two hundred and. Five thousand. Surplus on the next page on revenues versus expenditures, and there is about a. One hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit spend on this page, and the two cancel out to. About a hundred and ten thousand dollar actually increase in the overall open space financial picture.
Yeah, I do. I have a.
Realizing they're different.
That's.
So they're separated.
That's what one thing I think um. Maria made some progress on, but we still need to keep working on is how the fund balances. Uh. Report. Development and maintenance fund balance and acquisition fund balance. Um, and how 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 we are tracking that, and then I there's two other um. Detail items, and Rachel, this is uh, for you probably. One is. The Stevens Gulch acquisition is now likely to be a twenty twenty five expenditure, so that's something we can add to the budget. I think when we when we were approving that, we were, I was anticipating that would be. An appropriation. That would hit twenty twenty four, but it looks like now that will likely close in twenty twenty five, so we can. That as an acquisition expense uh, expense budget item.
You carrying forward from twenty four?
Well, it was not budgeted.
Okay.
It was not budgeted in twenty twenty four, so.
Okay.
Instead of having to do an appropriation for it in twenty twenty four, we can simply budget it in twenty twenty. Thing, and then the second. I I I remembered there should be some. A sale of uh, of a bunch of right of way property. For the um, Floyd Hill project. That includes some open space land, that there should be some revenue somewhere from that. That that had open space designated land related to it. And I don't know where that landed. I would have ended, that should end up in the open space fund, I would think. Hmm, so that's just a loose end that um, occurred to me right now, but. Thought I would say before. Something I would say before I forgot.
Okay, I just um, just wanted to clarify one thing with you, sorry. The Stevens Gulch is nothing to do with the other appropriation we were talking about, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Um.
How do utilities fit into open space operations?
There are um parks that have um lighting that um. There's ongoing expense for, and then um, the. There's also, we pay for the water, that's at the pond at Almarado.
Open space is a contract at the water bank. Good. Um. Is that, that's the end of strategic and community planning?
Yes.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
This is our last apartment ambulance, Aaron. But it's three seventeen.
Let's do tomorrow then.
Well, let's, let's not, um, you know, let's just keep going, but.
Poor Aaron.
Nice.
Yeah, I know.
You know, you should be asking why you're not going first, because this has been in alphabetical order.
Yeah.
Except for.
Now. That's good.
You might want to like be nicer to Rachel.
Breakfast treats for people that do the agenda are really important.
I might want to be nice to her.
Well, I did.
Oh, somewhere.
Yeah.
I did throw her under the bus earlier. And I wanted to, I actually came up with that number. But just to be clear, that line item here um literally says, do not enter data, finance will calculate. That was a Maria thing.
Yeah.
I didn't take your data.
Oh, you're talking about that? Oh, that wasn't a throw under the bus. Got that. That's true.
That's, that's a budgeting thing.
Yeah.
Something we're always going to be told.
So some context here, right? The EMS fund is taken on this. You've had a big increase in call volume. You believe you need a third bus and crew. That is not included in this budget. Um, what else do we need to know about your budget before we start covering you with questions?
Can I explain? That?
Yeah.
Few words as possible, but it won't be that few. Um, so to, to start um with the budget that. You know, this doesn't transfer anything. Um, so just wanted to make that note. Um, there are really um lots of small changes in line items throughout the budget. Um, two, two kind of major ones, um, because you have a little over a three hundred thousand dollar increase year over year. Um, and those are, again, and those two line items, one of them is salaries, because uh comp analysis. Is in that along with the three percent cola, uh, and then administrative charges um referencing MGT increased to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, from twenty-four to twenty-five. Um, and then there's the entire increase in our, in our year-over-year budget. Um. A little bit about um the state that we're in right now. Um. And I'll start with, uh, I'll go back to nineteen eighty. Um, Clay Creek EMS in nineteen eighty had two ambulances on. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we have two and a half ambulances lost. Uh, which is wild, uh, because I think I've, I've spoken with all of you about how, how much our, our volume, our call volume has increased. Since then, but especially as of late. Um, and since I began two thousand eighteen and I'm sure beyond data prior to that is. Uh, we've, we've increased call volume every single year with the exception of twenty twenty. Um, and, and significantly. Uh, last year we ran eighteen hundred and four calls. This year we're on track two thousand, two thousand and seventeen calls, um, which is pretty significant. Um, if you look at our, our time on task hours year over year, um, time on task, the clock starts. When an ambulance is dispatched to a call and it stops when that, that crew says, we're back in the county and available. They're not back to their station. They haven't cleaned their ambulance. They haven't. They haven't finished their patient care report, right? So there's still a lot of work to be done, but that's time on task hours. Um, this, the state's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, um, we had four thousand time on task hours. Um, the state's fiscal year twenty twenty-four, that ended June thirtieth, we had five thousand time on task hours, so a thousand more hours. Um, and we're not quite halfway through fiscal year twenty-five, but we're likely looking at six thousand um time on task hours. If you go back to twenty twenty-three, um, we use those numbers and we compare our time on task hours and our calls per ambulance. To all of our surrounding partners and other ambulance services in the state um that are similar in size. Our ambulances run more calls and are on those calls time on task significantly more than everybody else. If you go back to January of twenty twenty-three and we added the three FTEs that we need then, we still run more calls per ambulance than all of those.
Are we on those calls longer? Is that wholly explained by transportation distance?
Part of it is because um, part of it is because we are unlike most places in that we don't have an accepting facility in our service area. It's, it's really far out. We're just shy of forty-minute transport time, right? That's just from leaving scene to getting to the hospital, not including. Two scene time, the actual scene time, and then the, and then the returning time, right?
Right.
The other piece is we have less ambulances on in those places. If we only have two and a half, most of those places have three, four, five with a similar call volume. Um. If you. Um. If you look at our, our service area, we have sixty-five hundred residents. Our, our budget would be significantly lower if that's what we were, we were servicing. We're servicing seventy-five thousand every day. Fifty-seven percent of our call volume is non-resident, and that doesn't change year over year.
You didn't just say we're serving seventy-five thousand people every day, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you do, twelve, twelve million cars pass through our county every year. Two point eight people in each of, in each of those cars, that's seventy-five thousand people every day on them.
It's good. Forty-five thousand during.
Going to run two thousand seventeen calls in. In twenty twenty-four instead of five hundred calls like we should. Um. In terms of the uh, the volume that we're experiencing and again, every, every year since I've been here, starting in two thousand eighteen. We've, we've requested Gilpin to stand by for us more than last year. Um, meaning if you call nine-one-one, you're not going to get a quick recounting ambulance because they're all transporting patients. Um, you're going to get someone else, Gilpin, maybe Summit, maybe Evergreen. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we, we requested Gilpin fifty-four times. In twenty twenty-four year to date, we've requested them ninety-four times. Um, they've transported twenty-eight of our patients out of our county this year, which means that we can't handle our volume. We, and we haven't been able to for a while.
Yeah.
In contrast, they've requested us thirty-eight times this year. So we've requested them three, three times more. It's not a, not an equal relationship. Um. Part of it is because um, we don't have enough, enough FTEs, but the other part is because we can't, we can't stay fully staffed. In January of twenty-three, um, we, uh, we did away with our partnership staff in lieu of adding three FTEs so that we could go to two and a half ambulances all the time. Um, and we haven't recognized the benefits of being fully staffed at all since then, and that was twenty months ago. The, there, there have been short periods of time where you look at it and you're like, well, no, and EMS is fully staffed on paper. All of their FTEs are full. But we have a three to six month, depending on the person, uh, field training period, um, which matters a lot, because if they're in field training, they're not a fully independent um provider. Um, and so we've never experienced everyone being out of the field training program completely operational. Before someone gets out of that field training program, one, two, three people. Um, one of the things that you mentioned earlier, um, that you wanted to know was, you know, why, why do people leave? And I don't see all of the um. Um, the exit interview information from, from HR, because I don't need to know that, all of that information. I guess I only get it when I really need it. But what they tell me when they're leaving, the vast majority of the time is because they're going to go. Um. We've had a paramedic opening for over sixty days. Um, currently, we've extended two verbal helpers to paramedics that work in what we would consider entry-level EMS services. Historically, um, these places are where they go to get enough experience to apply to a place like Cleveland County. And they're declining job offers because they make more money at those places. Um. We really have, if we can't do both, and, and I, I don't think we can because of the, the financial situation that we're in. Um, you know, with two options that we have, I, I think are really number one, fund the comp analysis and number two, add the FTEs. I put the FTEs in the, the unfunded portion of the, the budget proposal, because it doesn't do me any good to add those FTEs on paper and know that I can't fill those spots. So I know that was a lot of numbers um and information and. Um, I guess there's only, there's only really one more thing that I want to, that I want to touch on too is, and I kind of skipped over this, but. Um, we talked about, you know, near-record level inflation that we're dealing with and, and costs of things are, are a lot more. Um. It's significantly higher for us. When we, when we wrote a check for a remounted ambulance, or twenty-three, it was one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. When we write that same check for that same exact ambulance in twenty twenty-five, it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. No difference in those ambulance remounts. That's as many as we can get it. Can't get, can't get it anymore fair. Um. Our ambulance supply or our medical supply line item, in twenty twenty-three, we spent ninety-five thousand dollars. When I looked at that for the twenty twenty-four budget, I thought for sure we could beat that. I was going to beat it. So I budgeted seventy thousand. I was wrong. Back up to ninety. Um, medical supplies and medical equipment. It's uh, is experiencing a much worse. Situation. Um. I'm sure there's more of it though.
Um, my only question is um ambulance service fees. Um, what do you think about increasing them proportional to your increase in salary expenses?
So we can, um, we did, we did an ambulance fee service uh increase in twenty twenty-three. Um, when I pulled the numbers at the start of this budget cycle uh in August, that had resulted in about a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars or um in reimbursements, which is good. And since then, um, CMS or the Centers for, for Medicare and Medicaid, um, their suggestion on what our ambulance service fees is exactly what we charge. So it's essentially the federal government saying this is what you should do. Um. They've increased those fees again. I had a conversation with our ambulance billing specialist. Um, and, and the situation surrounding uh commercial insurance companies and what we've realized is we can do that again and potentially get more money. But not from commercial insurance companies. That money is coming from individuals. When we bill an insurance company three thousand dollars, they arbitrarily reimburse us five hundred. That twenty-five hundred dollars gets passed along to the, which is unfair. I'm, I'm happy to, to show you what those fee analysis is like. Um, but know that the majority of that would be paid by individuals, not.
Paid by what?
What's that?
The majority would be.
Would be, would be, if we saw an increase in reimbursements, the majority of that would come from individuals.
Mm-hmm.
Not their insurance companies, not Medicare.
Didn't you just pitch us that most of your users are visitors?
Correct, fifty-seven percent.
Do, do we have? How, do we have like a forgiveness policy?
No. We don't. Um, we do have, um, we, we do what a lot of ambulance services don't, and we'll set up a plan for people that can't pay in full. And we'll do that over time to help them out. Um, and if they do pay, if they, if they do have to pay out of pocket and they're willing to pay in full, then we give them a, a slight discount. But not a forgiveness policy.
Are we real aggressive on collections?
Um, I would say yes.
Maybe that's a, maybe deciding to be less aggressive on collections could. Be the way to sort of help us, please.
So we would have a more aggressive fee policy and a less aggressive collection.
Correct. Um.
Like what he thought to me, maybe.
Anyway, that's. Those are. The only other, I don't know, I thought I marked this down, C chat. Um, where's the grant funding for the C chat program? Is that in this? Oh, nevermind, nevermind. It's a very bad, that's what it is.
Other than salaries and expenses. Thousand dollars in, in expenses. We're um, we're meeting with uh Elizabeth and I, the chat director, a meeting with Rachel tomorrow. That's planned. Um, and fingers crossed, we have a plan for um. For all of it to be fully grant funded.
I know, like, we're, we're operating off two grants right now, right? And one of them, we only get another couple of years, I think.
Correct.
I don't think so. I mean, what I see is uh, C chat is, is about fifty thousand upside down. And the rest of the ambulance fund is five hundred ninety-five thousand upside down. Right.
Um. For twenty twenty-five?
Six hundred and uh, five hundred ninety-five upside down.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Six forty-five overall. I'm sorry, with the C chat, it, when you add the two together, the entire ambulance fund is six hundred and forty-five upside down. As proposed.
Um, before I let you go, you haven't mentioned it, so I'm going to mention it for you. Um, last year you got a fifty percent cardiac save rate. You accomplished that. With all of the difficulties you just mentioned being present and um makes me even more. Um, grateful, admire your work even more and your team's work. Thank you.
Um, so I guess the one thing I have, so just so I understand, because I looked at funded requests, um. And I did not see the ambulance stuff among them. So does that mean that, that, that those requests are built into this budget?
They're not built into.
I didn't think they were.
They're not. We, we updated that on the attachment that's in your actual packet.
Okay.
Um. Uh.
That's what I thought. I thought I'd seen it earlier under unfunded and then I didn't find it just now when I looked back. Okay.
For, for EMS, the major unfunded items are two and it's three FTEs.
Right. That's what I, I knew that. I just was, I was just trying to figure out where it was, because I just went back up to the unfunded request in the packet, not the attachment, and uh, that was my mistake.
And the other one is the new ambulance.
Right. Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna, you know, share, share my ignorance again and. And state that those seventy thousand visitors that drive through that we serve every day is a strong argument for. Their shoulder lane. If they need it, need something. So try to get some money out of those people for emergency services. That's where we're spending our money. That's all. Inexperience lets me say that. Thanks.
I, I uh.
I think it's a great idea. It is a great one. All we need to do is get the state and the feds to agree to give us the money off of the great shoulder lanes. It might be.
Or the fines or somewhere.
Well, the fines have just been appropriated for transit statewide.
Not for today's discussion.
I'm not suggesting that's what should have happened. It was just something that I kind of thought would happen as we go forward. We're waiting for the ball to drop on the toes.
And when people make I seventy less safe, they help build a train in the front range.
Um. Thank you. I'll thank everybody in staff. I don't know if you guys were expecting to still be talking about line items and budgets at three thirty. Um, it's a big budget. We do a lot. We, we, it's a very meaningful organization of the people. Um, so let's um. Jump into reflections and sort of high-level direction to staff about what we want the next draft of this budget to work with.
Somebody want to throw?
Anything out there in terms of big picture, what we think? We need to ask staff.
You want us to go through our list?
Oh, you, yeah, you did want to go through your list first.
Mine's just a laundry list, start to end. I think you may be, what do you think?
I nerded out and grouped them.
So, so this should, and this should help inform what Mike, first question would come before we start weighing in our big picture, which is. There are a whole bunch of line items in here that we, I said, well, no, we need to do this. That's what, so that's going to fill in that, so what's the deficit that we're looking at?
For efficiency sake, you guys mention things and then one of us will speak up if we think that's a thing that you shouldn't do.
Yes, thank you.
That's great. Yeah?
Sure.
Okay, actions. Um. You want data on the ST. You want data on STRs versus license versus what we know to be in place in relationship to lodging tax?
I really just want the estimate to be included, like, to be data informed. I don't need to see the data myself.
Okay, thank you. Licenses and permit, licenses, permits and charges, along with all fees, need to be evaluated and moved closer to balance some of the structural problem we have. Sales tax, C dot impact to sales tax, what is the construction timeline and impact duration? It looks like you wanted that information. Is that correct? The bigger picture? No? Okay. Great.
I mean, I had done, you wanted us to take, retake a look at our sales tax projections and then.
Yeah.
And.
Include that as part of.
You can include that.
We could certainly do that. Yeah, I mean. Maximal sale, telling us we might be right, but, yeah.
You also wanted us to revisit what two thousand eight sales tax looked like in comparison.
Yeah, like that grouping of years there, right? To after the great recession.
The two thousand five to two thousand eight, so it's thinking.
I wanna test the theory that we're sort of anti-fragile to recessionary pressure.
Do you want two thousand eight to eleven or five to eight?
Maybe I want like two thousand six to eleven or something like, you know, just, just before and after, whatever those.
Evaluate capital projects, capital outlay, and those central, those contract charges to make sure that they're in the appropriate accounts. Much the same with the salaries accounts, to make sure that the distributions are correct. That the November working session, that was something that also needed to be added. Supplemental appropriation action for later fifteen thousand dollars to address the courthouse ADA sidewalk, revisit the number. So that'd be for twenty twenty-six.
Or even like the.
Twenty-five.
Session sometime next year.
Next year, yes.
We're gonna have to solve that for this budget.
I mean, do, do you have that in the budget?
No, we kind of.
That was in the unfund.
Correct.
You just suggested that that was an important project and should be added to the capital list. Do you want something of similar value removed?
The thing, as I understand it, we might decide to make that door available to the public.
I just heard you say you, that's a twenty-six, twenty.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five revisit in twenty twenty-five, what I heard you just say.
Yeah, I think next, next year, we decide whether that door is remaining closed to the public or not, and, and if it is, we figure out how to fund that sidewalk.
I thought, I thought I heard that we were gonna add it to the budget.
No, it would be as a supplemental appropriation in twenty-five.
Thank you.
No, seventy-five, uh, cut in half, gas or, and it's really your transportation-related budget. For the commissioner's budget, within the commissioner's budget. You need, uh, we need to work on a meeting or further data from the coroner around their FTE count. And their call data. Action, let's see here, wage study vacancies and turnover and the funding of those wages. So I, I'm not really sure. Those were the three key metrics that you talked about being interested in learning more on, but I wasn't sure exactly what the ask is on the action side.
I think that's, this is an example of me overspecifying. I was trying to evaluate it. That's how I would evaluate it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm hearing you say you wanna see the vacancies compared to increases. Where are the vacancies at in the, in the that would keep, keep losing people and how does that relate to the salary structure? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, and I, I just don't know if it's important for me to be at that level of the weeds. I, I think what's important is when we start talking big picture, that one of the options is funding less of the salary study, and, and that's the approach I would take if it was me to do it. Is that?
Yeah.
So you said be strategic if one has to spend less than the full amount of the seller study.
Is that making sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think personally, what I would like to see us do is go back and reassess how we did it two years ago, when we, when we couldn't fund it all the way then either. And see where that gets us. And, but we all need, we need to sit down as a team and have that conversation. That becomes one of the options that you wanna take.
I just wanna be careful not to overspecify.
Yeah.
You guys are smart, so.
And before you keep going, I got a couple of more revenue things. Backfill eligibility, likely going to backfill for property tax. Reassess the investment earnings that we're projecting. I think you just gotta answer on ambulance revenues and whether or not we can increase those fees or is that?
We heard that there's a trade-off, and I think the for, it's a little bit of a trade-off because we might end up increasing costs to patients.
We can discuss.
But you can have collections policies on the other end and on your zip code.
Right.
And then link to the Freeport contribution to the Wallace Center.
So I think what you're hearing from the board on the ambulance thing is that we would like to see that be evaluated, and, and if staff agrees or disagrees, like, we'd like to hear about that.
Okay.
So when you just said link to Freeport.
Link to the Freeport. There you go. Link to the Freeport contribution to the Wallace Center.
Thanks.
I got more if you want me to.
Yeah, county, well, I'm at county attorney.
At sheriff's office.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get a lot out of sheriff's office.
Second EM, emergency management FTE grant funding percentage. Breakdown of the sheriff's office admin maintenance line. Jeffcom savings. Confinement commentary regarding smoking revenue. Please, feel free to tell us you don't need these things.
I, I mean, I, I wanna see them adjust that line item. I mean, he, he mentioned that he thought there was valuable revenue potential.
And the attrition rate change.
Great.
Now that county attorney.
And then county attorney.
Or just sheriff.
And sheriff.
And sheriff. Evaluate the human services potential of using those dollars to cover the half, half, at least a half of the FTE.
And then the outsourcing numbers, actual numbers applied to the outsourcing.
Employee appreciation, wanna the county manager to revisit that number? CTSI. Next year, evaluate or rebid that self-insured versus countywide property liability.
Yeah, and why, and why the increase?
Move Noco Places and Matt Blue Sky history work project to within the commissioner's budget.
Yeah, and Noco Places, well.
Fund at what level?
We could talk about where they need to be, but we need to add ten thousand in Noco Places.
Twenty-five thousand total.
And then ten thousand, ten thousand for the first year of Matt Blue Sky, and five, five, the additional next two years.
You have great. MGT study, that's twenty twenty-six, that's on the list to be done, evaluate that. Those are those are internal charges and how they were calculated.
Specifically with the concern about treasurer's fees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, got it. Transit ridership.
Or you get their state gaming grant projection number also.
Be validated.
Forty-four, yeah, three forty-four, five about.
That's what's in there, but they asked us to reevaluate it.
Uh, three hundred is what's in there.
Oh.
Three hundred's in there, yeah, and it's higher than that. I have the exact amount.
Okay.
In the portal.
All right, well, we'll, we'll get with you on that.
Okay. IT, evaluate the IT needs and outsource. Transit station fee, along with all the other fees, and Snow and I salary line, same salary issue. Steven Sculch budget. I need to add it in the twenty twenty-five positions. And then that's it.
Therapist, the therapist salary number needs to be cut to thirty hours.
Yes.
You asked for ridership numbers, I think Stoich is up ten to twelve percent.
I don't think we need those as budget input.
Site development fees, that's the fee issue, fixing the Snow and I salary line.
There's a lot of those in there.
Yeah. Okay.
Dollars, numbers are right. The one thing that I had a clarifying question on, what's the FPPA into the SOB, into the sheriff's office budget? It's not in there as far as increases, but is that something that perhaps we just come back at the beginning of the year with sheriff's office to have them provide info on status or?
Yeah, there's an actual, it's on the actual ballot in November, whether or not we can participate, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a twenty-five, I think that's a twenty-five discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got it. And then there's a list of questions that y'all had, and I also took, but we can send you that data if you want me to go over what those questions were as well.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's know if that's something you need to follow up on.
I mean.
Not things to inform the budget.
I'm okay with, yeah, if these are not things to inform the budget, if you're going through those questions and there, there are questions that aren't relevant to the budget.
Okay.
Like, all right, let's put those in the parking lot.
Okay, great.
Great. Back to you.
Thank you.
That's it, okay. Probably all have thoughts about, like, at a high level, what we wanna ask staff to go out and accomplish for us. Before we jump into board dialogue, anything you wanna share?
No, uh-uh.
Right?
I, I shared a little bit earlier. I'd kinda like to listen for a little bit, open-mindedly, myself.
Anything from staff before? Is that what our ideas are?
I would go back to what I said at the beginning, you know, the more specific you can be with with respects to priorities and, and how to, how to bring back cuts, if there are specific objectives that we should use or priorities that we should use to bring potential cuts back, that would be helpful to hear. Are there things that are off the table? If they're off the table, now we, we shouldn't spend time bringing them to you, putting them on a list. And what's on the table? Service delivery cuts. The more, the more specific you can be, the better.
About five minutes, stretch your legs.
Take five minutes and stretch my legs.
Ski story.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't want to. Tip it over and make all that noise.
Okay, we're back, we have spent the last. Seven and a half hours. Going through this budget in excruciating detail. And there's some observations, um. It's time to talk big picture, sort of. What do we want to see? In the next draft? Staff get us that. I don't. Have to start this conversation. Either of you want to? Start this conversation?
No, I'm, I'm going to wait. No, that's it, that's what I meant to say, I think. You know, the low person on the totem pole should always. Um. I wa- I want to share that I really appreciate the work that's gone into preparing the documents. That's I realize um throughout the organization, not just the people who are able to attend today. So I want to clearly state, I appreciate all of that work. Um, some people finished last year and even previous years um. Under budget. And I appreciate that too, but it makes me wonder if there's too much buffer in the budget. Um, if people are able to finish under budget, maybe they need a sharper pencil. Um. I think I heard some people perhaps misinterpret. Um Commissioner Marlin's question about software, I don't think. Um, any of the members of the commission, none of the commissioners were questioning whether software is important. I think he wanted to know, do you have the right tool for your job? Is it making you be the most efficient department possible? So, no one says we don't need software, we just want to make sure you guys have the best tools available. To be effective and efficient. Um. And I don't see a way forward in the budget without um reducing services. And I'm hopeful other people may. But um I I don't know how we close the gap that's before us. And maintain county services into the future without doing that. That's it.
I think you're right, and I um. Events have accelerated. Uh, two years ago, I ran, I said that. I will, I will not meaningfully decrease, I will not meaningfully decrease services. Without offering taxpayers the option to fund those services. Um. That, that offer, that proposal is going to need to happen next year. For, for us to make good on that commitment, um if we want to. Um, but I don't think that this, that we can solve this with tax increases alone, and we're, we're talking about four million dollars. Um, four million dollars is equal to. Is it? Almost two percent in sales tax. It's um. At three hundred and thirty-three thousand per mil, that's. Sixteen mils, they're big numbers. Um. There are, there's tax proposal potential working its way through the legislature that could. Kind of fundamentally alter this conversation. But I don't think to the point that. Um. Looking at the services we're offering that we're not required to offer. And figuring out how to find additional partner funding for them or. Stop providing them or something um. Possible. Um, at this point. Um, I, like, I want to point out, something that's not in this budget is getting into parity on our retirement plans. Uh, and that's a, that's another big expense, I I would like to see things like that that we have calculated and aspired to that we know the organization needs. Be in the unfunded request section of the budget. Um, I think that's, that's important for transparency sake. For the public really to know the, the true cost of, of the government that I hear all the time that they want, right? Uh, kind of government that picks up the phone and you call and, and has somebody to provide a service when you need it. Um. As far as what to do. Over these next two months before we pass a budget. Um. I'm sure all three of us have been wrestling with that. Um. Heard me talk a lot today about fee increases, it's not going to close the gap, might get us there. Bunch of little minor observations that, that collectively. Might add up to a half a million dollars. Yeah. Um. Um, so. Uh. One of the questions in my mind is, I, I think we need to give staff a target. Of expense reduction or a target of deficit reduction. Um. The difference that if we specify. We've, we've already kind of specified everything we want to see on the revenue side. Terms of this fee, that fee. So I, I, I feel like the appropriate thing to do is, is target an expenditure, expense reduction. Um. I'll pause there. Um, is, am I, if I identified the options correctly and do you agree that that, that the expense reduction option is the right one?
Well, I'd like to see expenses reduced, but it sounds limiting. Because it, it suggests to me you want to set um an expense goal. Opposed to a net operating. Goal. Or, or net deficit goal. Right. That's. So I, I think what matters to me is a significant reduction in what that gap is, I don't expect it to go to zero. Um. If it halved, I'd be. I would be very interested in seeing how to do that.
Part of my perspective and preferring, we've, we've talked about revenues with a lot of specificity. And um. It's the, it's the expense conversation that's hard. And, and so it's the one that I kind of. Want to make sure gets done. I'm worried if we don't, if we, if we say just reduce the deficit. Um. We don't see. You know, um. Sharp enough pencils on the expense side.
Let me comment on that because. The only lever we as staff have. Is of bringing you a fee increase. Or cutting expenses. You've already given us specific direction on, on fees. So the only thing we as staff have left. So to, whether you want to frame it as a. Deficit goal. Or an expense goal, I think from my perspective, it's the same, we have to do that through. Cutting our expenses. So the pencil's got to get sharper, we're not going to hit the goal that you're going to give us.
At the. At the current time, this is what I was alluding to earlier. There are really, you know, I mentioned there's three dials that we have at our disposal and they're kind of like. Dial one, dial two A and dial two B. And then there's a dial three actually over on the side that we can turn, which is to increase revenues meaningfully, which doesn't mean. I mean, I get it, we should be leave no stone unturned, look under every rock, you know, sure, increase the. Short term rental fee or whatever, make sure fees match this, and that's going to be a little piecemeal thing that's going to, going to get a little bit of it, not a lot. But we basically have how much tolerance we have for gap, in other words, like how much gap, how much deficit are we willing to allow to remain? And then, once we determine what that is, what are the methods through which we're willing to? Make up the amount of gap that we've decided we want to see staff. Away with, and right now the two big ticket items are reduce staff. Or reduce the pay increase, because the pay increase is the big driver here. And so first of all, I'd like to say that I don't think there's any of that that I just said that you haven't understood since before we had this meeting too. And I appreciate the fact that you've come and invested all this time in preparing this, uh, and it's got to be very stressful because you know what it means. It means that there's, there's a decision to be made about. If we reduce um. Services. Well, that means. Going ahead in, in honor of the pay increase, reducing staff in order to implement a pay increase of the staff that remains. And if you're looking at a twenty million dollar HR cost. And you got a four million dollar gap. And you were to try to accomplish the whole thing, you would be looking at trying to give everybody a, a, a. A pay increase that would be. Not the full four million, three and a half million or whatever, because the staff reduces the, the, the gap decreases, so if you do, if you do it through staff, then you wouldn't be. It wouldn't be that much, but you're looking at somewhere in the, in the, you know, seventeen to twenty percent. You know, this, you'd be giving people a pay increase, and if you have five chairs sitting next to each other in an apartment, it means that four of those people get a. A pay increase equal to the cost of the other person and that person goes away. And then that means that we reduce services, that's what it means to reduce services. And if the object is to reduce services so that we got a really much better chance next year because everybody's pissed off and they know they need to increase services, it means we're going out and crash landing the plane. And then having to repair it once they pass for the uh. Because then what we'd be doing is using the money that they give us next year after we've reduced staff and reduced services to rebuild staff and services. And uh, to me, that's uh not something that I, it doesn't feel like good overall policy and strategy. It feels like it should be incumbent upon us because I heard you just mentioned George a second ago that. You made this promise when you came in, and I think it's a really good one, that you would give the people the opportunity to fund services before you would take those services away. And yet, right now, we don't have no way, we have no way to give them the option to fund services. Uh, until next year, and so if we take those away, we will have removed services before we gave them the option of making that decision. So I think therefore I kind of go with the idea of instead. And say, what kind of a gap are we willing to tolerate? What, how much of that gap, I mean, we say that that's a gap deficit, the same thing. If it's deficit reduction, we've got a four, a four million dollar deficit. Then what, what deficit are we willing to tolerate? And what is the deficit reduction, therefore the, the remainder that we want to see? And if, let's just say if it's fifty percent, if we want to see it reduced from four million to two million and accept a two million dollar deficit this year. Because we've accepted larger ones in the past and that's the state we're still in as we're transitioning into a new um post. Uh Henderson era. Then uh, then we leave it to staff. To work out the solutions of. Reducing deficit, and this is what I proposed earlier, and my bias is to reduce deficit as well as possible. Um. With the surgical kind of. Uh, questions we've asked and suggestions we've made as we went through the budget. And then you, and then from there, whatever's left over after you've done that without reducing people. Then uh, then look at that people reduction versus pay increase reduction at that point. And make the best decisions you can, I would err on the side of keeping people and having a lower pay increase in order to accomplish that, and, and if you, obviously, if you reduce the deficit by fifty percent. If you increase, if you, if you allow fifty percent of that deficit. You leave room for a pay increase. And you could, you, you do leave room to even have a pay increase with, not without a single layoff, it's just a matter of that's going to be a smaller pay increase, the more people you lay off, the bigger the pay increase is, and then you get back to that, how many chairs in the room disappeared question? I would propose to leave it to staff to come back to us. I would suggest we. We give a, a, a deficit reduction target. And uh, I don't know that we're in agreement on whether we. Reduce services. Um. We primarily make it a service reduction. And get rid of the gap, we're not going to get rid of the four bill, a four million dollar gap, that's not going to happen. I mean, I would. I would not be in favor of it. I saw the, but when I saw the final budget come through.
Be drastic.
Yeah. Well, am I, was that, hopefully I was not too obtuse, that I was clear enough. No, but I, I would. Um. Share my, my thought on um increasing the wage levels and um, one of the key aspects there is to try and keep people in their seats. Um, you know, you, you mentioned the empty seat, you're absolutely right, that was a, that was a great description, but. By getting people up competitive wages, we're not going to have nearly as much retraining. Or stops and, or temporary gaps in service because we have to fill a position. I agree with that, I, I do agree with that, I recognize some of its voluntary staff reduction too when that happens, and I'm not suggesting we don't give staff an increase. I just, I, I'm suggesting that we. We, we communicate our dedication to keeping them in jobs that they want to have. And um. And we give as much of an increase as we can while doing that, and we absorb some deficit, and then we make, and then we do a much, much better job. Behind this table going forward, whoever's behind this table of actually communicating to the public so that they understand the decision they have to make, so they do make a hard decision to get their wallet out and fund the services they want to see. While paying a living wage. And, and I don't think that it's up to us to go out and crash the pa- plane by letting a bunch of people go and at least crash land it and have to re- rebuild a wing and some landing gear later on in order to have a nice plane. I, I think we can try to keep this thing flying and uh, and do a better job of convincing everyone they need a better plane. Now, I think we have failed at, first of all, being courageous enough to even. Get it to the ballot. Because we've seen this coming for a long time and we haven't, we haven't taken the action to get the revenues that we need, we haven't been willing to have the courage to. Uh, you know, to go out there and get it, and I know it's not, I know it's not just a matter of courage, it's a matter of being in the right economic environment to be able to get people to say yes, in the right political environment. But we need to be better politicians and better leaders and better communicators in order to get them to pay us, and I don't, I would hate to see that much. But we need to be better politicians and better leaders and better communicators in order to get them to pay us. And I don't, I would hate to see that much staff reduction and that much service reduction and that much reduction of the quality of this organization, if you want to know the truth, other than meaning that the quality, I, I do think that equality and the scale of the government and the services it's supposed to private, to provide is a reduction in the quality of the overall government. Cause we're not doing the job that we were, that we either aspirationally wanted to do or required by state law to do. We don't do that.
I, I agree wholeheartedly with your analogy that crashing the plane in order to have a better plane is a bad idea. I, maybe staff can help us get this right. I think the components of the deficit are about 1.35 million for the wage increase, about a half million for a COLA adjustment. Other 2.15 million is property tax issues. Other, other cost inflation, contract services inflation, materials. So just, just so that you have that, I think I'm accurate.
Well, I, I'm, I'm going by what Brian told me when I asked him to summarize the big gap in a phone call that I walked back. And you told me that three and a half million of the reduction was, you, you said three and a half million of it could be, could be pegged on the, on the, the pay adjustment.
It's 1.4 in the general fund for a pay adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and that was ignorant, what I just said, but I was basing.
So it's 1.4 in the general fund.
So, I mean, I, I can, I can support, you both have a preference to sort of give a deficit reduction target, not an expense reduction target. I can.
I buy Brian's argument that it's tomato and tomato.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So it's tomato, tomato. We'll frame it like that. I heard you suggest that you'd like to pass a budget that is not more than $2 million underwater. Randy?
Uh, I, I was thinking a 50% reduction target of the gap is a pretty good goal for this year. And, and we've, we've endured up to, you know, we've endured a $3 million gap in the past. If we, if we, you know, we're really proud of, to have gotten it down from three to one. And now we're hitting a, we're hitting a bunch of heavy bumps in the road. And if we have to go back up to two because of those new challenges, that's just another bump in the road, just like the reduction with Anderson. And we owe it to the government, we owe it to our constituents to keep the services out there. I stand by that portion of what I said in general, even if I got to go back and re-figure the numbers based.
That is probably my fault, not our conversation.
No, it's, no, it's, it's, it's at least, it's at least a lot my fault for not having gone in and analyzed it more carefully and paid more attention before I made that stirring speech.
So we have, uh, uh, it's, it's still relevant. We have, I think we have agreement on goal. Let's, staff has encouraged us to be specific. Kind of three specific things that I have in mind. And, and I, I want to ask staff and others, like, what are the, what are the tools? What are the levers that we have access to here? We've mentioned the increases a lot. That's one of the three. And analysis of where to fund the wage study is, is another one of the three, right? Funding less than a hundred percent of that 1.3 million dollars.
Right.
And I think the third one that I can think of is the combination of an FTE review, including vacant positions and occupied positions.
Right.
And crucially, development of a severance policy. I think there are other tools out there. There are, we could, we could come up with a furlough day scheme. We could, there's another one that wasn't floating around in my head. What other, what other kind of levers do we have access to here?
I think the, I've thought about a couple of things. The furlough day thing is, uh, seems kind of pointless to me because, okay, we're going to give everybody a little more of a raise and we're going to, but then we're going to tell them to take a day off. The only thing they got out of that was a little more free time and the same amount of money than if you just had them work and gave them a little less of a raise. So we can decide if we want to do that, have them make an X amount of money for, slot for one less day.
I mean, our initial calculation of furloughs was that reduction is all the same as the 3%.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's like a mix of staff reduction and it's a different version of it. I had another thought, but it slipped through. I was talking.
Cutting the 3% has much more of an impact.
What's that?
Cutting the 3%, COLA has much more of an impact on our bottom line, moving forward, because that number's not compounding over time. Those are all the things that we're going to have to evaluate as a team to build a list for you in the end that.
I remember the other thing I want to say, which is when we talk about severance, if we go into some, if we do something that's rather than a, a dismissal for cause, if we go to a layoff situation, then we have to decide what kind of a moral imperative we have on severance and stuff for that kind, when you go into that kind of a situation. I think we're in a temporary, I, I think we're in a, we've been on a glide path that's been really rough for a long time, 10 to 15 years. And it's leveled out and now we've hit some real turbulence, you know, using a plane analogy again. So I think that, so what we've got right now is at this very moment, because we realize we need this pay increase, the same thing counties around us and governments all over saying, what we have is another temporary problem. And now we got to get the gap back down to whatever means we can and realize that, and we realize we haven't gotten to the polls and we know we need to get to the polls and we need to socialize this in a way that gets the voters to vote to fund this thing. And so if we achieve it through layoffs, this is another thought, and those layoffs have to be compensated for by some humane severance policy. That kind of like reduces the benefit for, for during the year in which you give that severance. And so you don't get as much benefit out of it anyway. And then you get to the polls and it's time to get the people to vote. You get them to vote and they vote yes. And then you hire people again and replace all the people that you got rid of. And it just seems a little oxymoronic to take that path. And that's what I mean by crashing the plane, you know, that we, we have to go out and, and, and hurt. You know, the, the idea is we're, instead of communicating more clearly, we go out and we put the hurt on the customer, the recipient of the services, so that then they're willing to pay as opposed to communicating effectively and helping them understand what it takes to maintain their services. And with that, I'm done.
How are we, how are we doing as far as specificity? Pretty general so far?
It's good. I mean, it gives us some options to bring you back, you back, back options for consideration of a, somewhere around a $2 million reduction in expense and/or gap, however you want to call it.
We haven't mentioned.
I'm sorry, what number did you just share?
Two million.
Okay. Whatever you want.
I, what would be helpful for me? I've been trying to figure out how, for a couple of weeks, how to communicate this. It would be helpful for me to have options that add up to more than 2 million. Because if we're asking you for 2 million deficit reduction and you bring us options that equal 2 million, we don't really have options.
Yeah, we can't pick and choose.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know that, that means we need to raise the number. I just want to emphasize that, like, I, I want options.
I like the $2 million target myself. And if we end up 28 of it, then it is what it is. I think 2 million is a big, it's a big lift myself. My gut is looking at this thing. So to say, you know, we just agreed on to, to say 2.5 so we can end up at two is to hedging our bets back up. I like to.
I guess we need to bring you options that you can pick and choose from that gets you to 2 million.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. And that, that's okay. I mean, I mean, depending on how we dice up the, the compensation analysis right there, right? That number could be different based on various options for how we could fund that. And that's, we all need to sit down as a team and have a conversation as well.
Yeah. And it's like, so to add to some specificity, I'm curious how you both feel about this. I think where we have high turnover, I'll point to the transfer station and the CDL jobs is, is painful example. We have to hit a hundred percent funding of that wage, of that wage gap. We have to do that. That's, that's 2% below what our human resources person thinks it should be at, right? She thinks we should be paying 102%. And I, and I don't mean that, I, I agree with you. So like with that caveat, like if I, I'm looking at 1.85 million being nobody gets a raise. And that's the same analogy that you provided. That's, that's crashing the plane. So the plane can be better because right now we're effectively not delivering services because we're underpaying and having high turnover.
Well, we're talking about giving a raise. I didn't say, don't give a raise. So I won't categorize you as heartless. If you don't categorize me as stupid enough to say we shouldn't do anything. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is let's meet halfway and let's let staff work on the problem. So I, I'd like to, so whether, bring us a list that gives us a $2 million outcome or bring us a $2 million list. We gave you, we're, we're reasonably close in a ballpark.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm not saying that at you. I'm just saying that 1.85 is really, really close to two. And, and that's, you know, I just, I just want to see those options.
I know you do. I know you want to see a larger number and a larger reduction than I want to see. I got that part. And so all I was saying was, is we're having this, as we're doing this, is we're, as we're arguing over how much you want to pay or I want to pay for the used car here. All I'm saying is I think $2 million is a pretty big lift for a list. And I realize that you'd like to see a $2 million outcome and that requires a little bigger list because undoubtedly any of us might say, ooh, that, I don't like that piece. And we'll, we'll, each of us will pitch something off the list we don't like. And I understand. So you can bring us a 2.5 million dollar list or you can bring us a $2 million?
I'm, I'm fine with a $2 million list. I just needed to express that I hope it's more than 1.8, less than 1.85 and, and non-salary increases, right?
So what, what kind of schedule is necessary to get us to the point where we agree on a budget and can actually get it passed?
That's what I want. We need another meeting.
That was going to be my question, right? So you've got two more meetings technically before you're scheduled to adopt this budget on December 10th.
So we probably need at least a two hour session to go over a list during one of those meetings.
Question is, do we want to set it's special meeting to do that? Do we, do we think as a team that we can get to this November 5th, which is next to a week from today?
November 5th or November?
November 5th. We have a board meeting next, next Tuesday, which I.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was thinking November 1. I thought November 1 was meeting.
It would be a big push for us to get you on the list.
That's, I would suggest November 19th. We, uh, we, we have, we come in prepared to do what we have to do and get it done. So we can have the meeting on, in December.
I have been, I've appreciated being able to just focus on the budget today. And I wonder if we want to give ourselves that opportunity again. We have the Tuesday, the 12th not scheduled.
Yeah, the mayor's and commissioner's meeting that day.
And we have a Board of Education study session at 3:30. So that means we've got a gap between 10, on my calendar, I have a gap between 10 and 3:30.
What keeps it from being eight hours?
That's why I was suggesting we prob, I think honestly, we've gone through, first of all, we went through, like most of this day, six hours of this day was, uh, going through the entire budget. You're going to come back with a list of options and it's not going to be anything like this entire budget.
That's up to you.
I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
That's, I'm the risk factor here. I'm not going to do that.
That seemed like a given to me. So we could do a, a special meeting is fine. And that's why I mentioned two hours a little bit ago, we'd have to carve out a two hour session at a minimum. And for one of our meetings.
What's that? 12, 11, 13.
Make sure I'm not talking out of school here.
I know I am. That would be great.
12, you went to 12?
So the Henderson season is the 13th.
Yeah. I mean, I would put this over that, but I've got something in the morning that day too, from 8:30 to 10. But otherwise, other than the Henderson climax thing, I'm, uh, good after 10 all day on the 13th. And I am good on the 12th, except for the two meetings you mentioned.
Sorry, I may have missed it, but do we have an open space commission meeting on the 12th? No, it's the 14th.
The 14th. At night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got JC mentioned evening at 4:30 too, so.
For the talk?
On the 13th.
Should we make the 12th work?
I'd prefer the 12th that I can be flexible.
10:30 gives you time to get here from, actually, we, you want to do it here? You want to do it in, like, I might as well do it here, given we're going to be here already at Marion's.
You like to get us out of that room for these kinds of conversations anyway.
Do 10:30 here and that gives us a solid four hours to mess with it. We want to.
All right. Sean used to say, if you schedule time, you're going to use it. And, and I know, I, I know that like I could use some pressure to, to be more concise.
I know. Yeah, okay, whatever. Um, I think, uh, I, I, I think it's also good to be realistic and understand how much time it might take to finish it. So I think we can get this done in two hours myself. I just note that it gives us a four hour window easily with another hour before the Board of Education to decompress afterwards.
You don't typically schedule them in time, right?
10:30 to two?
Just schedule it from 10:30 to 3:30. Lock it.
Okay. 10:30 to 3:30.
We should expect it to be 10 to 12. That's what we expected.
Your goal is 10 to 12, 10:30.
Brian doesn't believe me that I'm not going to show up and go through every line of the budget again. You know me.
And want to, yeah, and want to compare it to the CPI and get, and call, make some calls and do a little research along the way. Google World Bank.
Okay. Does anybody want to offer any closing comments?
No.
Thank you all. The greatest favor we can do is not make another speech. We're adjourned.